We'll call this meeting to order, June 4th, 2025 Planning Commission. And we'll start with our flag salute by Commissioner Mark Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For those who are able, please stand and join us in the pledge.
I will allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Commissioner Hegel.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Chair Turley Trejo.
Here.
All are present.
All right, great. So we will, do we have any public comments on non-agendised items?
None. We have none.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meetings by submitting a speaker card to the commission's secretary.
Who about this one?
Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to Planning Commissioner at TemeculaCA.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Item number one on the consent calendar is to approve action minutes of May 21st, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval. Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have an excused absence. I was not here. So four is zero. Thank you. All right. We will go ahead to the public hearing tonight. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. All right. Number two, long-range planning project number LR25-0004, amending titles 5, 8, 16, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code. Katie.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I will be presenting our annual Title 17 Code Maintenance, and we'll just get right into it. Some background to set us up, the Temecula Municipal Code was originally adopted by the Temecula City Council in 1990, and since its adoption, the city council has periodically made amendments to various sections of the code to improve its clarity, improve processes, and implement state law. The Planning Commission is required to review and make recommendations to the city council regarding zoning regulations and amendments to Title 17 of the Municipal Code. The changes to Title 5, 8, and 16, although not under the purview of the Planning Commission, are still included to provide clarity and additional information to the Planning Commission regarding the totality of the proposed changes. The proposed ordinance would amend Title 5 Business License and Regulations, Title 8 Health and Safety, Title 16 Subdivisions, and Title 17 Zoning of the Temecula Municipal Code. The only change proposed to Title 5 is for business license generally. Amend to allow a business license to be issued prior to the issuance of another government agency's permit or license when required. This just stemmed from a business owner trying to get a federal permit, but they needed a city business license, and we couldn't issue that unless they had the federal permit. So just trying to make it consistent so they can now apply for their federal permit, they can now get the Temecula business license without the federal permit, so then they can then go get their federal permit. And then jumping into Title 8, the only proposed change here is to nuisance cost accounting. Currently, cost recovery for city abatement actions is prohibited prior to six months, so this amendment would reduce the timeframe to two months. So essentially, we'll get our money back quicker, so every two months, we can get that recoupment cost. Jumping into Title 16, only one proposed change here as well. This is specific to urban lot splits. We're just correcting the minimum and maximum driveway width for flag lots specifically. So currently, the code reads as 20 as minimum and 16 as maximum, so we just need to flip them, just a correction, administrative correction there. Title 17, there are 12 proposed changes, so we'll get right into it. The first one being, this one would require any modification made to an existing conditional use permit that contains language on alcohol or live entertainment. It will then remove the conditions associated with the live entertainment and apply for the appropriate license, and this is to make it consistent with the Alcohol and Entertainment License Chapter, and this is just one modifying existing CUPs. Next one is for home occupation permits, and this would require that client-based businesses such as tutoring, music lessons, hairstylists, to operate one-on-one, non-consecutive appointments only. We currently already practice this, so this is just codifying it to essentially keep residential zones residential. They can have one-on-one appointments, but just to prevent from someone teaching classes out of their home for multiple people at a time. So just be individual, one-on-one. Next one is for residential districts, and we're just adding a footnote for religious institutions to utilize existing special use standards. So we're not proposing any additional requirements, just simply adding a footnote to reference the existing standards in the code. Going into accessory structures, this is clarifying that accessory structures shall be single-story, no changes to the maximum height, just simply adding that single-story aspect to prevent two-story sheds. And continuing on the accessory structure route, this is to add sheds as an accessory structure, so we're just including the word shed. We already currently have the three-foot setback requirement, but because we've had an influx of so many people coming in for sheds, we're simply adding the word shed as an accessory structure with the three-foot setback. Parking requirements, we're adding bicycle parking requirements for multi-tenant residential developments, specifically at one bike space for every five units, or 10% of total parking space is provided, whichever is greater, and the two required facilities would either be a Class 1 locker or Class 2 racks, which you can see above some examples. We already currently have these for commercial and industrial areas. We're just adding them for residential developments. And the schedule of permitted uses for commercial, office, and industrial districts, we're proposing to remove barber, beauty shops, and personal service shops as a permitted use in light industrial and business park zones. This is essentially to have them go into more commercial zones, opening up more light industrial spaces. We did a recent fiscal land use study that provided that we needed more industrial businesses, so essentially opening up those spaces for industrial businesses to use and having these personal service shops or beauty shops go into commercial locations. And then the second one on the slide is we would require sports and recreational or training facilities to complete a parking analysis. We've seen an influx of sports and recreation facilities in the city. These are pickleball, indoor pickleball courts, volleyball courts, things on that scale, and we typically ask for a parking analysis, and this is just codifying it, saying that they will need to complete a parking analysis because of the issues we've seen with them being underparked. There's one specific center that we've had trouble with parking, and so this is to address that. Moving forward, the Class 4 Entertainment section of 17.09.040, this would correct last-call hours from 10:29:59 to 11:29:59, and this was also just a clerical error. It was already passed as 11:29:59, but it was just put in the code incorrectly, so no, no changes proposed, just a correction. Energy storage standards, we're proposing to add a requirement for energy storage enclosures to have an anti-dumping feature incorporated into the design. These are things like a locking mechanism, metal guard door, curved picket, security fence, similar to our trash enclosure standards. We haven't had any energy storage facilities in the city yet, but we've had a couple inquiries, so just getting ahead of it here. Moving into signs, we would add exposed raceways as a prohibited sign for all signage. Another current practice, it just was never codified, so we're just adding that as a prohibited sign, and you can see here on the screen what an exposed raceway looks like, not in the city, just an example. It's that metal bar in the back of the sign. This one would prohibit any individual business signage or advertising on community features at major intersections. These are intended as a benefit to the public. We want to prevent additional signage for a single business. We've had a couple situations where we've had, it was supposed to be a community feature, and they added their own business sign to it, and they've now had extra signage along a major intersection, so just preventing that for any future development. And the last one here, some definitions. We're proposing to add a definition for auto salvage yard, impound yard, wrecking yard, as well as storage shed, utility enclosure, specifically to include no plumbing, so they could have electrical, just no plumbing, and then also add a definition for vending machine to specify that they should be located indoor only. And then we're also proposing to amend the definition for personal service shops, just to make it consistent with our definition and our specific plans, and these are non-medical enhancement businesses, so tanning salons, nail salons, things of that nature, just updating the definition because the current one is a little outdated. Those are all the proposed changes. Staff has determined that this ordinance is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15061B3, and staff is recommending to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution, recommending the city council adopt the ordinance, and find the project exempt from the environmental review per SEQA Section 15061B3. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate that report. I'm going to start down on this end with Fernando. Do you have any questions of staff? Really? I have to come back to you?
Yes, please.
Okay. Bob?
Just one question. If the business licenses, business licenses in residential area, if someone, say, has a group, say, a group sports thing, and they have, already have a license from the city, does this apply to them? Is it grandfathered, or?
So as is our current practices, we would not have permitted that in the first place. Usually, what we have them do is write on their statement of operations, which is a form in their business license application stating, maybe they teach them off-site at a commercial location, and they're just using their address for mailing purposes. So essentially, to my understanding, we would not have permitted group classes. It would be one-on-one, like, you know, coach on one player. If they want to do more than that, we would have them go out of their home.
What about any other type of business that might, say, have, you know, seven, eight, nine customers, you know, a day, not necessarily 100% continuous, but rather continuous throughout the day?
So again, kind of going on the statement of operations, because today is a current practice, we typically would have an applicant say, you know, appointment only, and say that it was non-consecutive. We might not have a way of regulating that, per se, but it's something that we've already had them put in their business license.
Right.
So I don't know if there's any existing businesses that do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Gary?
I don't have any questions. Everything seems pretty understandable. Those darn typos, though. Boy, they just keep looking for the-
Clerical errors.
You must, anyhow, good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Garcia, for another solid presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah. Couple of, couple of questions, just to clarify. I think it was explained, but I'm going to confirm my understanding. Under Analysis Item 2, Nuisance Cost Accounting, so as I read it, the current code allows for recruitment after six months and twice a year, and then the proposed religion, revision allows for recruitment after 60 days, but with what frequency?
So we're not, so it would be every two months. There's no limit to the amount of times in one year. So essentially, we're just mixing that language altogether and just saying every two months thereafter.
Another one, I think you explained it actually. Just to clarify, it's, actually, you did explain it. I'm going to skip that. Let's, let's see, hold on. Oh, under item 15, where we talk about outdoor vending machines, will that be retroactively applied to any businesses?
Specifically, the vending machines, if it was approved with a development plan, they would essentially be grandfathered in, so legal non-conforming. So, but if they were to, any existing business that has that, technically, yeah, they would be grandfathered in. So it would not, it would only apply to new vending machines where they would have to be stored indoor only.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I think I asked you most of the questions I had, Katie, beforehand, but one thing I did, question I did have is on number 10, on requiring a parking analysis for, you know, any sports, recreation, training facilities. How exactly do they do that analysis? Does that business do that analysis?
I will probably defer to staff.
So if it's in a, say, it's like a commercial strip center, they would take the square footage for each of the individual uses within that center, per use, per suite, and then use our development code to figure out what the minimum parking requirements are for the entire center. So it's not necessarily just for a basketball facility or an indoor pickleball court. It takes into consideration the entire center as a whole, and so then you, in addition to having, if it's individual suite owners, they all would have to sign that document, or if it's the owner of the center, and then everyone just signs leases, the owner of the center has to be the signatory to that, so everyone's on board. They're going to agree that if it's 50 spots you have to have, then there's 50 spots you have to have. You can't bring someone else in that is then a higher-use group, because you only have that many spaces.
So for example, the indoor pickleball complex, right? It's not the only thing in that center. So you're saying whoever actually owns the building would have to have all the clients or tenants sign on to whatever their analysis was?
Right. So we have situations where we have some of those, like, indoor miniature golf that's next to a church that's next to a laundromat, and each of those require a different amount of parking. So that, those are the situations where we're running into, where we're having these new uses move into old centers that are parking at a higher demand, and so we need confirmation that the parking's available at all hours.
And if they are owned by different, if each unit is owned by a different, has a different owner, then each of those places would have to do their own parking analysis, but including the whole center?
The existing businesses would just sign for the parking analysis, and what's recorded on title. The person that's coming in to get the permit does the parking analysis for the entire center.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And usually, they'll get that information from the owner of the center, so that's why the owner of the center is also a signatory, because they're the one that has the square footage and what use is supposed to be there.
Okay. Thank you. Any, oh, yeah, that's right.
Just one.
I got to come back to you. I see, I already forgot you.
Yeah, okay. My only question is for the home occupancy businesses, is there a time limit of when the clients can come see?
We initially threw that idea out there of having, like, requiring a 15, 30-minute gap between, but it's not something we can regulate. So essentially, by them agreeing to the home occupation permit that states it's non-consecutive appointment only, they're agreeing to that. So we can, if we've found that someone was having people coming in nonstop, we can enforce it by them signing that home occupation permit.
No, I guess my question is, like, oh, the business will operate till 6:00 PM, or visitors cannot come after a certain time?
Oh, like the hours of operation?
Yeah.
I don't think it states anything in our code for specific timeframe for them to operate, currently, no.
Okay. That was just a question. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
I came back to you for that?
That's it.
That's it? All right. Any other questions of staff? Okay. Thank you. I will go ahead and open the public hearing.
We have no request to speak on item number two, unless anyone out there would like to come up and speak on this.
Anyone? Anyone? Okay. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will entertain any discussion if we have, or in motion.
I'll move that we accept staff recommendation for item number two.
And I second.
All right. Moved by Gary Watts and seconded by Fernando Solis. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five, zero. All right. Moving on to item number three, planning application number PA24-0506, a Type 21 Off-Sell General Public Convenience or Necessity for 88 Ranch Marketplace located at 27473 Inez Road. Yenin?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I will be presenting Agenda Item Number Three, Planning Application Number PA24-0506 for 88 Ranch Marketplace. So this is a public convenience or necessity application for a proposed Type 21 Off-Sell General Alcohol License to authorize the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for 88 Ranch Marketplace. The, the project is located at 27473 Inez Road, located within the Tower Plaza Shopping Center. Here you see the floor plan for the grocery store, and it is composed of 37,000 square feet of floor space. 108 square feet is going to be dedicated for the alcohol sales area, which is less than 1% of the total floor area, and they will be having the alcohol towards the back of the store in existing coolers and at two front aisles near the cash registers. The Type 21 Off-Sell General will allow for the incidental sale of alcohol at a specialty grocery store. It allows for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. Patrons under 21 are permitted in premises. Primary sales consist of specialty Asian products that include meats, seafood, produce, canned goods, breads, water, juice, frozen foods, chips, et cetera, other goods such as napkins, disposable trays, shafars, serving utensils, food containers, cookware, et cetera. There is no live entertainment proposed. Operating hours are 8:00 AM through 8:00 PM, seven days a week. And when are findings for a PCN required? Once the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC, has determined that a specific location is in a census tract of overconcentration for liquor licenses. So here you see the location of the grocery store in that red star, and it is located in Census Tract 432.16. Overconcentration is based on residential population within a census tract. The census tract population is 6,495. Currently, four are off-sale licenses are allowed, and seven on-sale licenses are allowed. There are 17 off-sale active licenses. And within this tract, you will find the following with Type 21 licenses: Food for Less, Costco Wholesale, Vons, CVS, Target, Total Wine &amp; More, World Market, and Michael's Market. This application is exempt under Section 15301, Class 1 Existing Facilities. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve PA24-0506, subject to the conditions of approval. These conditions of approval have been provided to the applicant, and they have accepted them. That concludes my report, so I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Shannene. I will start on this end. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I only had a brief one. Thank you, Yenin, for your presentation, by the way. Can you tell me if we received any protests for the application?
We did not.
We did not. Then I've got another question that may just, maybe more appropriately directed to the applicant about their licensee education, training, can, so I'll bring that up with them. Thank you.
Gary? Bob?
Maybe you can answer this. If not, I'll save it for the applicant. What security measures are they taking regarding alarm systems and cameras?
So the applicant can give you a little bit more details, but they do have a Type 20 for beer and wine now, and my understanding from the applicant is that they have had these trainings within staff to kind of keep guard of the alcohol, keep an eye out. Those other details can be provided by the applicant.
Thank you.
Fernando?
No question. Thank you.
Okay. I think my questions are also for the applicant, so any other questions of staff at this time? Somebody? All right. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Steve Rawlings. I am here on behalf of Danny Tran and the 88 Ranch Market. As mentioned earlier, we do concur with the staff's recommendation and agreed all of the draft conditions of approval as presented to you this evening. I heard a couple of questions. I will address those. Just for those of you, for a little history, this used to be a Vons store many, many moons ago, probably 20 years ago. It did carry a full line of alcohol, so it sold beer, wine, and the distilled spirits. Danny opened up his store about 12 years ago. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to shop there very often, but it is, I would say that it's the leading Asian market here in the entire Temecula Valley. They attract people from all over the region to come to the store because of its really unique selection, and they have, as mentioned, we've been selling beer and wine since they opened the store there. A little side note, Danny also owns a similar store called 88 Ranch in Oceanside, California, where they, at that store, sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits as well. And as you guys saw, the alcohol is intended to be an incidental product. It completes the product offering. There's a lot of distilled spirits that are on demand by customers that frequent the store, i.e. Asian types of liquors that you're not going to find at a traditional grocery store. So this would be kind of the one location that they could come to and have and get that product, because they can't really get it in too many other places. In terms of security and training, that's always a great, great question. An interesting thing about Danny's story is Danny owns this store and another store. He's at those stores, like, all day, every day. This is his family's livelihood. His offices are, you know, keeps offices right near the checkout stands there. So in terms of watching the store and the activity, Danny goes through great lengths to not only himself monitor it, but insists that his managers and his employees are, you know, on the lookout for, you know, whether it be suspicious behavior, what's going on in the parking lot, you know, things like loitering in the parking lot. They certainly are proactive in trying to mitigate that from happening, because it detracts from customers, and obviously, he wants to provide a very safe atmosphere for his customers. In terms of, you know, shrinkage, which is shoplifting, that's something that's always on every retailer's mind, and unfortunately, it happens. You can do a lot of stuff, and it's still somehow or another- And unfortunately, it happens. You can do a lot of stuff and it's still somehow or another happens. But they pay particular attention to, you know, to the alcohol because it does have a propensity to sometimes leave the market. However, you don't see it so much in a, in a large format specialty grocery store like this. The people that are coming there are really there to purchase grocery products. There's a lot of other places that they would go if they were really looking for alcohol. This would not necessarily be their place that they would go. So they don't experience that type of shrinkage at the store traditionally. And we don't think that adding distilled spirits is going to increase that by any means. The spirits are located up actually near the front so that the cashiers have a very good eye on it. The beer products are there in the back. In terms of training, obviously, he goes through great lengths to train his employees. As being a sole proprietor, as many of us know, your liability to provide a very safe environment for your employees is pretty great. We all have workman's compensation and so every insurer will tell you, training, 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 training is your best prevention from having losses and accidents. And part of that training, obviously, is, you know, customer service, and we like to call it customer service, that is, hey, watching what customers are doing there. And it's not necessarily for nefarious activities, but it's also to, hey, help people out that are, you know, looking for, you know, for products. So Danny and his team really pride themselves on being engaging with all of their customers and it goes a long ways with preventing any, any types of issues. Danny does go through training with his employees on responsible alcohol service. There is, you know, a couple of major points that every retailer goes through. One is how to conduct a proper identification check so that you're not selling to minors. Danny's systems have a, have a cards scanner so that they can scan the I D. That you're presenting them to help verify that you're over the age of twenty-one. And the other thing is, is that that you can't serve somebody who's clearly looking like they're intoxicated. So they spend a lot of time making sure that everybody understands, hey, look for the signs of people that are intoxicated because it's not worth it to sell to people like that. So he goes through a great deal of training with that. He has a comprehensive security camera system. The monitors are, I believe, in his offices. So when he's in his office, he can be observing what's going on. And not all the cameras are necessarily located inside. They're located outside, back toward the loading dock and toward the front of the store. This is an active shopping center, a very active shopping center. And I'd like to think it's partly because of the eighty-eight Ranch Market. A lot of people come there. And so we simply haven't had a lot of issues at this particular store. So anyway, with that, hopefully you'll support this request and I'm available for any questions that anybody may have.
All right, questions of the applicant? I'll start down here. No? Bob? Gary?
What's the typical response? Like, I've seen this happen in, maybe not a grocery store, but a drugstore, where somebody will come in off the street and stick a bottle of whatever, liquor, in their pants and walk out. If someone does that in this store, what is the procedure that the employees are told to follow? Do you call the police? Do the police even respond? Those are the type of answers I'm seeking?
Well, number one, we hope that we see it happen. Unfortunately, sometimes there's stealth and that we don't see it. Oftentimes, somebody will say, say to them, hey, you're supposed to pay for that product. Under no circumstances do we, you know, quote, follow people out in the lot or, or, you know, try to stop them. That's, that's a really bad business practice for obvious reasons there. We take a note of it. We do, you know, capture the image so that our staff can be on the lookout for that person for another time. Because, you know, unfortunately, some of these people just kind of keep coming back to the stores and so we look out for that. If we get an egregious situation, we certainly do contact law enforcement. And as I mentioned before, shoplifting is something that we certainly don't like to see happen and we, and we take reasonable measures to prevent it because there's no insurance policy on that. That just is product that's out the door. You can't make a claim like if you got your car stolen, we can call our insurance company. You can't do that in a retail situation there, so.
Well, it costs all of us and, you know, operational costs that are passed on, so we all have a concern. And it sounds like the plan is perfectly appropriate. I certainly wouldn't expect anything more than that. So, thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for coming in, Mr. Rawlings. Very presentation, very informative. Couple of questions. Mr. Tran sounds like a reputable operator. I mean, there's no doubt about it. And he's committed, he's been doing business in that location for, what'd you say, twelve years?
Yep.
Successfully. Does he have affiliation with the Bamboo Restaurant next door?
I don't think so. No? Bamboo Restaurant?
No. I, I'm sorry, I thought he did. Okay, question. Any record of A B C violations under the type twenty?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of. No.
Good, yeah, good. And then another question. The company I work for, so we have ownership of nine type twenty-twenty-ones. So I have a working familiarity with the process. And one thing we've been pretty successful with is licensee education, the LEED program through the A B C. I understand that's a voluntary program, but it sounds as though, or I think, I believe I read in your statement of operations that Mr. Tran certainly intends, as you said, to, you know, do all that, do that training. One thing, though, that I questioned a bit about that was, I thought, I read he said, within the first sixty days of employment. And the reason I ask, why, why wait sixty days or till sixty days? Is because it seems like a new employee, they're more likely, I would think statistically, to make those mistakes on an I D. check or something like that earlier in their employment versus later. I wonder if Mr. Tran would be willing to consider pledging to, to, to commit to licensee education sooner than sixty days?
Certainly. That statement was more or less like, hey, it won't be any later than sixty days. For our own internal purposes, we train those people, you know, immediately. You know, especially when it's the cashiers and the managers because they're, they're the ones that are on the front line there. So we certainly don't have any objections to training earlier. In fact, that happens most of the time is that, hey, somebody comes on and obviously they're being trained on the point-of-sale system, but they also have to be trained in many other things. You know, we also, I know we don't sell other age, well, you know, if you sell lottery or any other types of products, you have to go through that training. So we don't, we don't have an issue with, with, with things like that. I mean, thank you for your answers tonight. Absolutely.
Okay, so my only question really is about police incidents at the store. History of police incidents.
I, I'm, Danny indicates he's not aware of, of anything within the store in, in recent years.
Is he here tonight?
Yeah, Danny's here.
Oh, can you come on up?
Come on up, Danny.
Hi. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to talk with you also.
For sure.
So, yeah, my question was on police incidents at the store in the last twelve years.
We don't have any, any police incident, really. Sometime we have some kids come in, try to shoplifting something. We have pictures, a camera, and anything we call the authority and show them the pictures and, you know, that's all we can do.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's no chasing after them.
Yeah. My, I guess my only concern is, you know, just adding more liquor, right, to the situation. And there are a lot of homeless people in that, in that area, too. So just being really proactive, right, is what you're talking about that you're going to do. So I hope that that's gonna happen.
Right. And I'm always on site, so.
Yeah.
Managers in front of the store, behind cashier, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
All right, do we have any public comments?
We have none on item number three.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for any discussion first before a motion. Anyone?
I just wanna make a statement. I think Mr. Tran will be a very reliable and I think he's provided all the answers between he and Steve. And I feel, feel pretty good about the situation, so.
Anyone else?
I think he seemed very forthright. The information was solid. I'll be supporting it.
Okay. Does anyone wanna make a?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Fernando and a second Mark Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, five zero, motion carried. And we'll move on to item number four, which it looks like everybody else is here for tonight. Thank you. All right, planning application number P A two one dash one five two five, modification to Temecula Valley Hospital Development Plan and Conditional Use Permit, P A zero seven dash zero two zero zero and P A zero seven dash zero two zero two. P A twenty-two dash zero one zero five, amendment to Temecula Hospital Plan Development Overlay District, P D O nine, and P A two five dash zero one eight one, modification to remove condition of approval, number twenty-seven from planning application P A one eight dash one two five eight. The project location, thirty-one, seven hundred Temecula Parkway, A P N. nine five nine dash zero eight zero dash zero three nine. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you stated, this is P A twenty-one dash fifteen twenty-five, P A twenty-two dash zero one zero five, and P A twenty-five dash zero one eight one, which is for Temecula Valley Hospital. So three different applications. The first one is the modification to the previously approved Temecula Valley Hospital, or A L O I S. known as T V H, Development Plan, which is P A zero seven zero two zero zero, and the Conditional Use Permit, or C U P., P A zero seven zero two zero two. It's also an amendment to the Temecula Valley Hospital Plan Development Overlay District, which is P D O dash nine. And finally, a modification to remove a condition of approval, number twenty-seven, from a previously approved planning application, which was P A eighteen dash one two five eight. So a couple of things this project does not propose is it does not propose construction or architecture of buildings. So we're only doing uses and the building or structure locations. So there's no architecture, there's no floor plans, there's no roof plans, there's no landscape plans. So those will all come in, in the future as T V H. is ready to bring those online. Those will come in as individual development plans, as we typically would see. There's no point in doing those now when it's not sure when those buildings will be built. There could be a situation where those development plans would expire and then T V H. would have to continually file extensions of time over and over again. So as they're ready to do them, we'll review them for them. And then finally, a behavioral health hospital or use is not a part of this project. Terms of the project location, it is here on the Temecula Valley Campus, which is, project is located at three one seven zero zero Temecula Parkway. So a little bit of history on the original development plan and C U P. On January twenty-second of two thousand eight, the City Council approved the development plan and the conditional use permit. Subsequent modifications were approved on February eleventh of two thousand eleven, or February eighth of two thousand eleven, May fourteenth of two thousand sixteen, and November twenty-seventh of two thousand eighteen. So analysis on this proposed development plan mod. So the previously approved development contained a hospital facility, which was originally two towers with three hundred and twenty beds, an emergency room, intensive and cardiac care services, outpatient and inpatient surgical services, and administrative offices. There was also a helipad, an eighty thousand square foot four-story medical office building, a sixty thousand square foot three-story medical office building, a ten thousand square foot cancer center, a eight thousand square foot fitness rehabilitation, rehabilitation center, and a bunch of surface parking. So phase one, so phase one is considered what's actually out there today. So if you're on the T V H. campus or you're driving by, what you will see is a two hundred and six thousand three hundred and forty-one square foot hospital, which is five stories, seventy-five feet. There is one-bed tower with a hundred and forty beds. There's a E D. department, a stroke and cardiac care, surgical service, administrative offices. There is also a helipad. And then there's surface parking and a storage building. Some of the surface parking and the storage building have just been added over the years, administratively approval by staff as T V H. needed additional parking or the storage to come online. And then these are additional office trailers that we've also approved. Terms of phase two, so phase two would include a twenty thousand square foot emergency department expansion. The biggest part of that expansion is adding nine bays to the emergency department, a hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot second hospital tower, should be a hundred and forty beds, five stories, seventy-five feet, a eighty thousand square foot medical office building, which is four stories and seventy-three feet, a twelve thousand six hundred square foot central utility plant that would serve the energy needs of the hospital, and then finally, surface parking in terms of four hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces. Now to see where all this would be located on the existing T V H. campus, would be the emergency department expansion, hospital tower number two, medical office building, central utility plant, they're on the back of the project, and then the surface parking. Moving on to phase three, this would be the third hospital tower, which would be the exact same as the second hospital tower, a hundred and forty beds, five stories, seventy-five feet, another eighty thousand square foot medical office building, also four stories and seventy-three feet, a parking structure, which is four stories and fifty-five feet. Approximately six hundred and eighty parking spaces would be allocated in there. And then parking would either be nine hundred and eighty-seven or nine hundred and thirty-five. That does include the parking structure. And that depends on the final location of the phase three medical office building. I'll show you the options on those. So this also, of course, does include the relocation of the helipad to the southwest corner of the parking structure. So going back to the site plan for phase three, so hospital tower number three, medical office building option A, medical option B, the parking structure, surface parking. And then the H. here shows the current location of the helipad and then that would be the relocation to the top of the parking structure. And then this is just a slide that shows the T V H. build-out. So this would be the new master plan. That would be part of the plan development overlay. So in terms of the helipad relocation and flight plan, in two thousand sixteen, the City Council approved the current location of the helipad. It was an interim location with the final location proposed on the roof of hospital power, tower number two. So the new proposed location is on the southwest corner of the proposed parking structure. This would not change the average monthly trips, which are roughly six. And prior to the future development plan for the parking structure and relocation of the helipad, approval from the F A A. and the Caltrans Division of Aeronautics would be required as well. So the existing flight path, here, this is the approved interim location. This is the northeast, northeast to southwest flight path. And again, this is approximately six monthly trips. The proposed flight path, see the proposed location here, this is a more east to west flight path, which would be coming more down Temecula Parkway and then up Temecula Parkway. And then what this does is it minimizes, minimizes the noise impacts to surrounding residential land uses and developments. And again, does not change the monthly trips, approximately six. So the history on the plan development overlay, January twenty-second of two thousand eight, the City Council approved the Temecula Hospital Plan Development Overlay, again, P D O nine, and that shows the exact location below. So what exactly is being amended within this P D O? So design guidelines for aesthetics of future buildings is being added, which includes exterior, exterior finishes, colors and materials and design elements, equipment screening, and requirements that the parking structure would adhere to the city guideline and development standards for parking garages. About two years ago, a year and a half maybe, we added, we made an update to Title seventeen that put in specific development standards for parking garages. A lot of that has to do with public safety. Some of the newer parked garages, you see you're walking in and lights come on for you or it shows you where there's an open space or not an open space. Talks about stairs being visible, so can't just be enclosed inside concrete, so nothing's happening in there. Also, there's an allowance for future buildings and structures to be administratively approved if buildings are in conformance with the architectural and design standard guidelines in P D O nine. Basically, what that means is the hospital campus, all the buildings should look generally the same with the same architecture. As long as Temecula Valley brings in buildings to us, it can be administratively approved in an effort to help them save time in their entitlement process. Also adding a maximum floor area ratio and lot coverage. So the development code floor area ratio is currently point three. So an F A R. of point three would not allow T V H. to achieve the current. So, an F A R of point three would not allow T V H to achieve the current needs and future goals of the proposed development plan. So, an increase to point five five provides for the development plan buildings and structures. And then increasing the lot coverage up to fifty-five percent will just allow the F A R and the lot coverage to align together. Also adding minimum parking requirements, there's currently no parking requirements within the plan development overlay. So, all we're doing is just adding the same requirements as the municipal code. And what this does is will ensure that the minimum parking is available as phases in the buildings come online. So, in terms of a Behavioral Health Hospital, at T V H's request, the behavioral health is not a component of the project. And should in the future, T V H want to add behavioral health or any other additional use or structure that's not specifically stated in the P D O, the project would require to go through further environmental review, additional entitlements, review and recommendation by the Planning Commission, and then ultimate approval by the City Council. So, what is the history on the C O A number twenty seven? So, in February of two thousand eleven, the City Council approved a modification to the development plan and added a Condition of Approval twenty seven, requiring Tower two to begin within five years of the certificate of occupancy for Tower one, or no later than February eighth, two thousand nineteen. In November of two thousand eighteen, the City Council approved a modification to that condition to change it to fifteen years of issuance, or no later than February of two thousand twenty-nine. T V H realized in two thousand eighteen that that Condition twenty seven was no longer feasible, obviously, to have that construction done by two thousand nineteen. It was less than a year away. To determine it's not really up to the city to tell the hospital when to build their buildings. So, we extended it ten years. Now, T V H is requesting the removal of C O A twenty seven as that timeframe just really isn't realistic. And it'll allow T V H to add Tower two and additional beds at the appropriate time for T V H. This prevents us, again, from coming back multiple times to Planning Commission and the City Council to ask for the same thing over and over again. Terms of community meetings, there were community meetings that were organized by the applicant on three different occasions. November of two thousand twenty-one, there was a meeting at the Ronald H. Roberts Library. There were eight members of the public in attendance. City staff was in attendance at that meeting. There was a presentation, a question and answer session. November thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three, here at the City of Temecula Conference Center, there was approximately a hundred and thirty members of the public in attendance. City staff was not in attendance at that meeting. That meeting was recorded and videotaped and posted to the YouTube channel the following day. March twenty-sixth of this year, in the same conference center, there was another community meeting. There were only eight members of the public in attendance then. Again, the was filmed, put on YouTube the following day. Planning Commission Subcommittee Meeting. In April of two thousand twenty-three, the project was presented to that Subcommittee, and that consisted of our Chair Charlie Trejo and former Commissioner Adam Ruiz. Terms of City Council Subcommittee Meetings, the project was presented to the City Council Ad hoc Hospital Subcommittee at five separate meetings. November of twenty-one, April and August of two thousand twenty-three, February of twenty-four, and then most recently, May of this year, with Mayor Kalphus and Council person, Jessica Alexander. Terms of C Q A, there was a subsequent environmental impact report done for this project. There's also a statement of overriding considerations for air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and transportation. With that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission adopt the proposed Planning Commission resolutions, recommending the City Council approval of the project and certification of the subsequent environmental impact report. That concludes the presentation. I'm here for questions. Our environmental consultant is here for questions. The hospital's C E O, the C O O, and the rest of his development team is here as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Scott, for that presentation. I will go ahead and ask my colleagues if they have any questions of staff at this time. I'm gonna start with Gary.
Okay. So, just make sure I have this straight. On the administrative approval for future design standards, they would work with planning staff to come up with acceptable materials, et cetera, designs that fit for the general P D O, correct?
Correct. The assumption is that all the buildings would essentially look the same.
So, none of that would come back before the Planning Commission for approval? Is that?
That is correct.
Okay, good. I'm in support of that. I like the new flight path. That's a much better idea. I just want a clarification where it says behavioral treatment. Are there any entitlements or commitments of any type that would obligate the city to approve a behavioral treatment portion of this project?
Not without it specifically being requested in a future application by the hospital.
And that would come before Planning Commission and the Council?
Planning Commission, Council, environmental entitlements. We would require additional community meetings.
And the decision would be discretionary on the role of the Commission and the Council?
Correct.
Thank you, Scott. I do have some questions on the mitigation measure. I don't know if we want to do that now or later with the consultant.
You could probably get it on the record right now, and so then the consultant can start preparing an answer.
Okay. Let me get through my paperwork here real quick. Next presentation, by the way. We have a lot of stuff to review. Okay, I am going to have some concerns about mitigation measure. Give our consultant time to prepare for it. I don't need the answer right now. Mitigation Measure three point thirteen dash two. The mitigation measure is implement no-cost transit pass program for employees. And one of the things I want to make sure I understand properly is the V M T portion, vehicle miles travel. I would like to have a lot more information on what that consists of, how it's derived, how do they come up with it? And there's a, there's a little percentage in that section that provides that there will, if there was one hundred percent participation on the part of employees, that there would be a consequent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. So, I'll save that, let the consultant figure that out, how he's gonna convince me, and the public. I think it's very confusing, this vehicle miles traveled concept. And I think the public would really benefit by having it explained in a real, simple, common sense manner. So, that's, give you time to prepare for that, please. And I will talk more about that particular mitigation measure when we discuss those things. I think that's pretty much it at this point in time. Madam Chair?
Thanks, Gary. Good questions. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had just, actually, it was, that was, that was an incredibly thorough and concise report. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I had one question. It struck me that the number of six flights a month seemed somewhat low. Are they typically ferrying patients in for emergency treatment or out? Or is it a blend?
It's a blend.
It's a blend, okay. And I'll echo Commissioner Watts' sentiment on the revised flight path. What an improvement. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Solis.
A lot of information.
Father Solis.
I just want to go back to the, just to clarify for me, right? The amendment that is in for commission today is as follows. Can you go to that side, please? The amendment is to add the design guidelines, the allowable future buildings, all those, one, two, three, four, five, six, six points? Okay. Got it. That's it. That's my question.
Okay.
Bob?
Nope, those questions have been asked already, so.
Okay. I asked my questions beforehand as well. Any other questions of staff or Scott at this time? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and have the applicant come up, please, first. We got all the bigwigs from the hospital, kinda cool. Get to meet all of you.
Well, good evening. My name is Hong Min. I'm the C E O of Temecula Valley Hospital. Wanted to say thank you for having this hearing. Wanted to extend a special thank to the Scott, wonderful presentation. Happy to present our vision for expanding healthcare resources made available to this community. I have with me my C O O, Brian Visser, who did a lot of work for us in helping to develop this plan and also presented earlier at the community meeting. We have a very special privilege here at Temecula Valley Hospital, which is to provide excellent healthcare to our community. As you know, we have a wonderful community, and we have a wonderful hospital that provides excellent healthcare to all of our community members, of which I am one. As you know, healthcare is an essential need in the community. And in the rapidly growing community like ours, we do not have enough healthcare resources to meet the needs of the community. That happens not only within inpatient hospital setting, but for primary care, for specialists. What this master facility plan allows for is for us to be able to expand and grow to meet the demands of the hospital, demands of the community for E D care. This past winter, we had a particularly difficult flu season, and our E D was jam-packed, and all of our hospital beds were filled. If we had an expanded E D with additional beds, that would have been wonderful, and I think we could all agree to that. Currently, if you look at all the different specialists, medical professionals, physicians within the community, there's not enough to meet the needs that we have here. And as we continue to grow, that need will continue to compound. Having a multiple medical office buildings where you can develop physician offices, outpatient centers, will be a great benefit to the community. It's been my privilege to lead a hospital full of wonderful people that work and live in this community, and to continue to provide additional jobs to our community, I think is a wonderful benefit. As you know, we live in a commuter community. Many people drive dozens, sometimes extending over a hundred miles a day to get to work in outside communities, San Diego, Orange County, even down to L.A. and further. And to be able to provide additional jobs, training opportunities for our students, I think is a wonderful benefit that we can continue to provide. And I'm excited to be able to say with the future plans that we have for the hospital, we can continue to be that integral partner and a good neighbor to this wonderful city that we call Temecula. Brian, do you have anything to add?
I do now.
Great, thank you. Any questions? The applicant? Bob? Oh? Gary?
Yes. I'm sure you've had a chance to review everything in there as far as the mitigation measures that are included within supplemental E I R. One of those measures provides that you are going to be required to give transit passes to all your employees. I personally think that's stepping a little bit into the private sector too much. It would satisfy me a whole lot more, and I would feel a whole lot better if that was a voluntary program that you not only supported but came up with and implemented, rather than us trying to tell you that's something to do. And the reason I say that is this is a very big project, we have a lot of employees. So do other companies in the city. And this would be the first time, as far as I know, that we're requiring a program like this. City doesn't provide it for its employees, as far as I know. County doesn't supply it for its employees, as far as I know. Pachanga, I don't think provides it either. The schools that are bombarded with traffic at least two days, two times a day, if you can't even get through the streets, as far as I know, don't provide that, not only to their employees, but to their students. A lot of the students live too far for bus service. So, my concern is that I think government's being a little bit heavy-handed on this. And that's why I want more information from our consultant on the whole greenhouse gas situation. So, if you could somehow assuage me somehow by saying, yeah, we really like that program, we support it, and we would implement it regardless of whether you told us or not, I think I would feel a whole lot better about that. What's your feelings on that?
Well, thank you for your comments. I do appreciate what you're saying, that rather than the city mandating that, if the business would offer that as, if T V H would offer that out of our own decision-making, that would be more amenable. I also understand that putting a precedent like that may be something that we not want to do. So, I appreciate your comments, and we will take that with us.
Your part or our part?
The precedent being the city mandating such a benefit.
That's my concern too, because from every project now, from now on, that potentially comes into play. And I just, I'm concerned about overreach. So, thank you for your response.
No one has questions of the applicant? Wow, okay. Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I am, I think there were a lot of concerns in the community about behavioral health, so I'm really grateful that that's off the table personally. And, yeah, I think it looks like a great project, and looks like, like you were saying, we need that in our community. And we're continually getting more and more people, and that need for sure. And also, that's been stated, the helipad, having that direction change is a big deal. So, I know that that would help residents that are nearby. So, thank you so much for your, for being here, all of you, and for all that you're doing for the hospital and for Temecula. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any comments?
Yes, we do. We have two comments. Do you want me to call them up?
Yes.
First speaker is Brad Storman.
Oh, 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 yeah, sorry. Apologize on that. We'll bring you up in just a minute. I'm sorry. Come on up. E I R consultant. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Eric Ruby with Ascent Environmental. We've actually been involved with preparation of the C Q A documents for the Temecula Valley Hospital since two thousand eight. So, we've prepared over a half a dozen separate C Q A documents over the years for various aspects of the, of the project, and we're happy to be associated with the hospital and the city's environmental consultant. Commissioner Watts, to address your questions, you're not the first person that has ever asked about V M T, and it is a very complicated subject and misunderstood quite a bit. Unfortunately, our subconsultant traffic engineer is not here tonight, and I know the city's traffic engineer is not here tonight either. They could certainly add to the discussion I'll have. And I'll do my best to explain V M T. And then we can also talk about the mitigation measure three point thirteen point two that you just mentioned. So, V M T was several years ago, in C Q A analysis was added in place of what was called Level of Service Analysis. They've replaced that with V M T. And the main purpose of that was, in addition to reducing traffic, was to reduce greenhouse gases. And so, when V M T was introduced, a whole new series of mitigation options also came along with that to reduce V M T, which in turn would reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, it's kind of a menu, kind of a laundry list of options that you have to do that. And the way V M T is calculated, it's called per-service population. So, it started out with W R cog, and looking at the entire Western Riverside County, what the trip generation is for that county, based on the land uses in that portion of the county. And then the City of Temecula came up with their own V M T threshold, which is twenty-nine point four V M T, which is miles per employee per day. That's the significance threshold. There's several ways that you can get underneath that threshold and be considered less than significant. You can either have a smaller project up to a certain size, which the hospital, of course, does not meet, it's much larger than that. You can also be in a transit efficiency area, which the project also is not within, so they do not meet that requirement. And the third way to do that is to reduce your V M T by fifteen percent below what the established threshold is from the city. And that twenty-nine point four mile threshold from the city, it was not able to be reduced. The project's V M T is thirty-eight point four miles, vehicle miles traveled. And so what you do at that point, when you have more vehicle miles traveled than the significance threshold, you try to reduce those through mitigation measures. And that's where we came up with those three separate measures that we put together. One is the voluntary trip reduction program, which includes facilities for bicycles, showers, you know, those sorts of things. The second is the one that you brought up, mitigation measure 3.13.2, which involves the hospital subsidizing transit passes for hospital employees that would help reduce VMT. And the third one is what we call end-of-trip bicycle facilities. So if you can take a transit option to a certain point and then be able to hop on an e-bike or some sort of a bike to get to the destination, that will work as well. And so even with all three of those mitigation measures, we were not able to reduce the VMT to less than significant. So it is one of the four impact areas that is not less than significant and is still unavoidable adverse and significant. And because of that, a statement of overriding considerations is required. So that's, in a nutshell, that's VMT. I'm not sure that entirely explains.
Yeah, it does, but I want some further clarification if you don't mind, so make sure I'm on the same page. So let's just say, out of the blue, they had 100 employees that worked. What I heard you say is Temecula would, our VMT is 29.4. So, 100 times 29.4? And the project is 38.4, so, right? 38.4 VMT? So the difference between 38.4 and 29.4 has to be somehow addressed. And so, as I read the paperwork here, using that same example, I don't know what the difference is in miles, but I see and hear that this measure would have the potential to reduce the greenhouse gas problem so much stuff here, by .23%? Is that correct? Or 2.4?
.24%, correct. It's relatively minor.
So, right. So, and a real easy explanation for everybody, if you and I got together and I had $100 and I said, "We're gonna divide this up and we're gonna follow this formula," I would give you 24 cents out of that $100. Is that, my math right on that?
That's right.
Okay. And so that does illustrate how small this effort is. And I'm not downplaying it nor the need for it. And once again, I'm primarily concerned about us jamming it down people's throats. So, I just wanted to understand that better, because that seemed like a very, very small gain. But I understand how hard it is to get that. So, you did a very good job explaining that and I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Any other SEQA-related questions?
Any other questions for the consultant? No? Nope?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we will have our first speaker come up.
Brad Storman.
Hello, my name is Brad Storman. I live at 31, 531 P.O. Pico, which is directly north of the project and across Deportola. Going back to 2008, I believe it is, yeah. I'm sorry, 2006, February 24th. I am Citizens Against Noise and Traffic, filed a lawsuit against the city and against Universal Health. And we had some mitigation factors that came about and we settled those. My concern is, with everything that's going on with the new project, the SEQA laws and whatever they observed with regard to noise pollution, light pollution, air pollution, traffic pollution, you know, pharmaceutical pollution from the facility itself, toxic trash pollution, and for me, degradation of my property and devaluation of my property. And, you know, talking about, once you were talking about the, I can't remember what, this gentleman here, Mr. Watts, you mentioned the thing that they're not having in now, the facility that they're not gonna have. I had, over a two-year period, three patients walk out, run out of the emergency care and come into my backyard and sit down. And I kinda freaked out, looked out and had the police come over. Hospital was looking for the patients. Yeah, so having that kind of facility over there would not be good, because it's happened to me twice in a year and a half period. Couple other things, you know. The noise pollution, obviously it's gonna increase because of the increased amount of traffic flow you're gonna have there. You know, your project's three times bigger than it was originally designed, basically. Once we, once they finish it with the three towers versus the two towers and the additional beds and the additional parking structure and everything that's going on with it. You know, my property is very unique from a standpoint, I'm only literally 150 feet from the back end of your property. I'm right across the street. And one of the issues that I have is the light in the parking structure. I was looking under here, couple, two things. You have the central utility plant parking structure, parking structure. Well, according to Mr. Cooper over here, it wasn't a parking structure, it was a flat. Maybe that's another error on this, it was a surface. But according to what was submitted here, you have the parking structure that's going to be, it says Phase 3 there, the big parking structure, but Phase 2, the very back of the property there, once you put in, it said 237 parking spots in Phase 1, then it said 237 in Phase 2, and 237 in Phase 3. Well, I don't think there's enough room there. I think you gotta go up. So if you go up and you have to build a parking structure, that's gonna be, lights going into my backyards from cars. It's gonna be lights going in my backyard anyway. Actually, right into my bedroom window. So, you know, obviously the mitigating factors I had before, I built a brick wall around my house, so I didn't have to deal with that. And the second thing that I did is I did some landscaping around there, which was minimal at best from what they provided me. And so I'm looking to mitigate those issues with the hospital or the city from a standpoint of adding more landscaping and finishing the wall that, on the one side, where I'm gonna have three times the noise that I had before. Let me just go quickly through this. We're talking, he says, what's it say here? Option A and Option B, 1,903 parking spots.
Just so you know, you have one more minute. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay, so, yeah, I figured we'd get here. So the other thing that, what's, I don't have any information on the 12,600 square foot central utility plant. What are they, what kind of electricity are there? That's 150 feet from my property. I object to that, wholeheartedly, because I don't know, is it, am I gonna hear buzzing sounds all night? Am I gonna hear just a total hum from that? What kind of noise is that gonna provide to my property? I'm very concerned about that. What else is there? Yeah, and then you had four environmental analyses identified, four things, air quality, greenhouse gas, which you've been talking about, transportation. Well, all those significantly affect my property. It says, you know, there's no mitigation for any of that for the people living in the area. And there's three homes, really, that live there. Mine, the guy next to me, and the guy in the corner of the project on the other side.
Thank you, Mr. Storman. Thank you, your time's up.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker.
Andrew Melling.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Andrew Melling. I'm a representative of the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters here in Riverside County out of local 951. And I believe, I'm sorry, I live in the local area and I work and recreate in the vicinity of the project. And I believe that I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of the project. The city should require the project to be built with contractors that will hire locally, pay prevailing wage, and utilize apprentices from a state-certified apprenticeship program. Workforce requirements like this reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Road: The Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030", the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. The Southern, I'm sorry, the South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that local hire requirements can result in air pollutant reductions. Recently, the state of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through the Affordable Housing and High Roads Act of 2022, otherwise known as Assembly Bill Number 2011, which requires projects to pay workers a prevailing wage and hire from state-certified apprenticeship programs for projects meeting certain seating, I'm sorry, sitting, siting, affordability and development standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other public comments?
No further.
Okay, can we have the applicant come back up for rebuttal, please? Or to address the concerns? Not a rebuttal, but to address the concerns.
Sure, thank you for having us back again. I'm gonna try to recall some of the things that came up. I can't recall them, so maybe Brian can help me with some of these items. For Mr. Storman, thank you for expressing your concerns. One of the concerns we had was around a central utility plant parking garage. That is not a parking garage. So there will be no lights on the parking garage, that's gonna be elevated, that shines light onto your property. The parking back there is a flat lot, so that will, so that is a concern, that's not gonna be there.
I'm sorry, can you go to the site plan, so then I can understand the applicant exactly where he's? Maybe you can identify, we can talk about the site plan.
So, on the top of the screen where it says Phase 2, on the right, there's a building with a D on it, that is the central utility plant. That is not a parking structure. The parking that surrounds it, that's, thank you, that circle right there, that is on the flat lot, so that is not a structure. So, the concerns around lights from a parking garage entering into the property, that will not be the case. The question around the noise from the central utility plant, with technology these days, central utility plants are fairly quiet. I do not foresee that to be, I understand the concerns around the buzzing and with power plants, it is not that.
Could you identify that on the map?
That is where, right next to the circle where it says D.
D? Thank you.
So, the central utility plants are there to help with utilities of the hospital. Will it generate some noise? It will. But with the technology these days, it's not gonna be a loud racket that buzzes all the time. That is not going to be the case. I don't remember some of the other concerns.
Do you remember, Brad?
I think generally speaking, the concerns were around parking, which we talked about, yes. Ultimately, this plan.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
Yeah, more than, this plan doubles, more than doubles our current level of surface level parking. The Phase 3 parking structure, which is N on the map, is a considerable distance from Deportola Road. And we don't anticipate that causing significant environmental impacts in terms of traffic, aside from being on the campus. So, those are those, those are those concerns. And then obviously, there's, we're not familiar with some of the details, because neither Hong nor I were here when the hospitals first developed, so we'll have to follow up on some of those other mitigation factors that were taken in the past. We'll have to follow up on that.
Just to add to a couple of those comments as well, in terms of the size, in terms of square footage of this proposal versus the original proposal, this proposal is roughly approximately 82,781 square feet bigger, so it's not a double in size. There's 549 excess parking spaces. In terms of the central utility plant and the noise, there is a mitigation measure 3.10-2. For prior to operation of the central plant, that must demonstrate compliance with the city's residential noise standards. The facility shall not operate until the compliance is shown. With inside that central utility plant, it'll provide heat and steam to the hospital and it'll have boilers, chilers, and cooling towers.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Thank you very much for answering those questions for our public speaker. Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Already had your five minutes, sorry. Maybe talk to the applicant after the meeting, that'd be great. Okay, any other public comments?
We have no.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant for my colleagues?
I have one question.
Okay.
For the parking structure, that's.
Is it for Scott or the applicant?
Uh, for Scott.
Okay.
So they anticipated Phase 3 parking structure, how many stories would that be?
Five.
Five stories? And the architecture of that will change?
Would be in line with the rest of the TVH campus.
So then the mitigation measures that are identified in the EIR of screening or lighting for adjacent residential uses will be addressed at the time when they submit the architectural plans?
Correct. They would have to meet the city of Temecula development standards for that.
So that, so then when it goes, when the applicant is ready to submit full architectural plans, staff would review it to make sure complies with all the mitigation measures?
Each and every building that comes in after this would have to, would adhere to all these mitigation measures, yes.
Okay. And one of the mitigation measures for the abiding uses, which is the residential uses, would be, is, I don't know exactly what it is and I'm asking.
So there's noise impacts, it could be from the central utility plant, it could be from other operations of the hotel. When you're going, affecting single-family neighborhoods adjacent to you, it's a 65 decibel allowance. If you're affecting multifamily, which would be the Madera Vista project, to the east of the hospital, it would be a 70 decibel maximum. In terms of light, you're not allowed to bleed light over property lines. So, for something from the hospital to bleed light over a property line, would have to go across Deportola and then across property lines to get to those residential homes.
Okay, thank you.
Briefly, ma'am? So, all of that objective criteria, like say a photometric study or a sound study and all that, that would still be a part of staff's review, yes?
Correct.
Thank you.
The lighting would also have to meet the Palomar Observatory requirements as well?
So it would have to meet the Palomar Observatory requirements. It would also have to meet the city of Temecula development standards for onsite lighting requirements, which is a one-foot candle without any walkways, drive aisles, parking spaces. And that's obviously for person's safety on TVH's property.
Right, so that's even more restrictive then.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for my colleagues of staff? Okay. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and have discussion at this time about this item. Comments? Mr. Watson?
It'll surprise you to learn that I can add no value to this discussion. I'm fully satisfied, but I thank you for recognizing me.
You're welcome, Mr. Watts.
The city has grown a lot. And we do have a hospital and there's a demand for it, obviously. And I do feel for the neighbors. It's tough when that happens. But this hospital's been identified and approved for a long time and I think it is time for us to start meeting the needs, the demands. Certainly with the expansion of California healthcare under the last few years, it has made it much tougher for everyone to complete their medical needs. A lot harder. So, we do have a need for it. It's very clear, I think, for anybody who's had any medical use.
Lot, a lot harder. So, we do have a need for it. It's very clear, I think, for anybody who's had any medical issues, you have to wait a long time. So, we're ready and I'm very pleased with, uh, the behavioral component being removed. I, uh, I think the benefits of the project are huge. They're spelled out in the statement of overriding considerations. Contrary to my, my, uh, resistance to the one mitigation measure, um, I get it. I understand why it's there. I just, uh, some people would say semantics, but semantics makes it just a little easier for me. Anyhow, um, the project benefits are immense for the city and the community. And, uh, I have nothing but good things to say at this point in time.
Thank you. Bob?
Uh, I, I understand where, you know, where you're coming from. I live not too far from the hospital and, you know, can have some of the same concerns. At the same time, I've been a frequent user of the hospital as well as the other two Southwest hospitals. I was on the Patient Advisory Committee for several years at the other two hospitals and, um, have sat in on a lot of executive meetings over the years. So I have a very good understanding of what your challenges are. And, uh, having used, I, I've had surgery at all the hospitals, uh, one this year. I, yeah, I, I see, you know, the need, um, been in the hospital enough to see other people coming in with the need and have plenty of friends who have used the hospitals over and over again. So yes, there is a huge need and that need is not gonna get any, any smaller. Um, that's for sure. So, uh, you know, I'm very supportive of the hospitals. Um, I would encourage you to work with, I, I gather there's pretty much three residents that have the biggest, biggest issues. To work with them to minimize the impact on them. I know if, if there is concern about lighting from the garage, there is definitely things that can be done with preventing, uh, car lights from, you know, as you go up the ramps from, from, uh, being released out into the, out into the public by using barriers and things like that. So there are things that, that can be done. And other than that, I did listen to the YouTube video of the meeting in March and, um, it's, it's, it, what you're doing is making, making sense. I know that these next two phases could be five years, it could be ten years, it could be fifteen years, depending upon needs and depending upon, uh, Southwest's ability to, uh, financially do these projects. So, I would support this, uh, this change.
Thank you. Fernando?
I also agree with fellow commissioners Watts and Hago about the big need of this hospital expanding. I also agree with the residents saying that they are close and you have concerns about lights. And I believe that there is mitigations and there is measures like landscape block walls. They are not gonna have the transformer. They're very close to where I think we identified. I think we cleared that. But I feel that there's a big, there's a big need in expanding the hospital. I personally have gone there, not myself, but I have taken people there twice and they have saved their lives. And it was packed. So, there is a need and, and I, I've, uh, personally gone there. So, I'm on full support of the project and that's my comment.
Thank you. Appreciate all my colleagues' comments. I'm grateful for a new CEO and with this direction. I think, uh, Mr. Storman, his concern with, you know, having people in his backyard would have been even worse if we have a behavioral health, um, facility there. So, really grateful for that decision at this time. And also, uh, appreciate the way that you have worked with the city. I've heard only good things from you as a new CEO with, uh, city staff and executive staff, so I appreciate that very much. We, we wanna have a good relationship with the hospital, for sure, right? You're gonna save our life some days. We wanna have a good relationship. I appreciate, uh, Sequa Consultant being here and addressing some of our concerns also. And especially appreciate Scott and all his work on this project. And, and I, I remember Mr. Storman from when I first was on here, um, in, uh, on the Planning Commission and the helipad. And so we're, I'm hoping he's grateful for the flight direction because that was a big deal then. So we're grateful for that change of flight direction also. So, it's kind of fun to see a lot of history, right, behind this. You guys haven't been here this whole time, but seeing that history, kinda like Scott and I were talking about that, coming to pass and seeing a good project coming forward. And so, I'm excited about this project and, and what it will do for the community. So I appreciate that and all the work that everybody's done to, to bring it here tonight to us. And on that, I will accept a motion.
I will move that we accept staff recommendation to adopt the resolutions contained in item number four.
I, first of all, I needed to ask, Peter, do we need to do these separately?
No, you can do them all in one motion.
Okay, great.
Was, was that acceptable motion, Peter?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
As you referenced the, uh, the resolutions and the staff recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Gary Watts and a second by Mark Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Congratulations. All right, thank you. We will go to Commissioner Reports and where can I start? Bob, I'm gonna start with you.
I have nothing, I don't think. I had it the last meeting that you were here.
Okay, okay.
No report.
You're gonna have a report next time, hopefully. Okay, and Mark?
I have no Commissioner report at this time, but thank you for recognizing me, Madam Chair.
And Gary?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Okay, sounds good. All right, then we'll go to Community Development Director, Mr. Peters.
Just a reminder, uh, State of the City is tomorrow morning. Doors open at seven, breakfast at seven-thirty, and then presentation at eight. We will have a community development booth there, so stop by and visit. I think, Mark Collins and Katie and our general plan consultant will be there running the booth, so stop by and say hi.
Thank you. Mr. Ron. Public Works.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, we will have a booth as well there, so come by and see the Public Works booth. We have a monitor set up showing the projects that have occurred in the last year, so I think you guys would enjoy that. And then, uh, before we meet again as a commission, uh, on June sixteenth, we have our ribbon cutting of French Valley Parkway Phase Two. So, certainly you guys are invited to that. So, biggest project in the city's history. Uh, we're, we'll have our congressman there, so we're hoping for a lot of attendance at that one and you're certainly invited, uh, June sixteenth to, uh, celebrate with us.
Can you give us a little snippet of phase three, just for those watching the meeting?
Sure. Phase three is going to be the bridge, uh, over the I-15 that will connect French Valley Parkway to Date Street. So, uh, when you exit French Valley, if you're going in the southbound direction, you know how you make a quick right? Well, that's supposed to be a bridge and it goes all the way across and connects into Date. So we just kicked off design for that, uh, with Caltrans and so we're gonna start having, TY Lin begin the design there. We need to revalidate the environmental document. We're hoping to get that done before October first of next year because VMT will be a significant problem for us if we don't get it done before the October first. But we do, as, as Eric was mentioning, he did a great job of summarizing, we do have a policy in place for VMT. And then we also, one thing that, um, I was going to say, but it never came up, is we're currently working with WR COG to create a VMT bank. And so they're trying to establish that. The Executive Committee already approved that, but they need to actually come up with a plan for that. What that will do is rather than on individual projects, trying to mitigate like with bus passes and things like that, WR COG's gonna set up a regional system of trying to address regional traffic concerns. So projects such as this would just pay in to the bank. And then eventually those funds will be used for regional traffic, uh, projects. So WR COG's in the midst of doing that right now. It's not in place yet, but it's coming. And then that may benefit our bridge project quite a bit. So it's gonna be the bridge over, as you asked, and the northbound onramps. So people coming from French Valley could go up Date, you know, and get on the freeway there rather than at Winchester. So we're working on that in design right now. And, oh, one last thing. Northbound, uh, onramps at Rancho California Road are gonna be closed for seven days. And that begins the day after the Balloon and Wine Festival on that Monday, the twenty-third. So, the northbound on-ramp will be closed.
When, Mr. Moreno, can you tell me, what time of day is that on the sixteenth for the dedication?
It is, I believe it's ten o'clock.
It's ten?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Fernando, I already went through it. We already went through it. Yeah. It's, it's not fun, but we're, we're gonna be patient. Seven days. Anything else, Ron?
No, that was about it. And the phase one, or phase two celebration is actually at nine-thirty. So, correction, nine-thirty.
And where is that exactly?
Oh, it says ten, well. Show up at nine-thirty.
Where is it exactly, just for those watching?
It'll be at the end of Date Street where we did the initial groundbreaking.
All right. Okay, anything else before I adjourn? All right, I will not be here next time. I know you're gonna miss me again. But I'm in charge of a church girls camp, so pray for me. That's all I can say. I'll be back, though. Thank you for a great meeting to my colleagues and the staff and we'll come back on, um, July, June eighteenth. We're still in June. Great. Meeting adjourned.